Wow. Dennis is on an ambulance call, so he's gonna be running late.
I'm trying to do a story out of his step too.
I know. I told him he should.
So.
He's gonna give another minute or so because people are coming to the. All right. Uh, calling being to order at six oh three P M. Yes, and join. The political leaders through the power of United States of America and through the Republic over which it stands, one nation under our government, municipal, with liberty and justice for all. Uh, first up approval of the trenders warrants payroll warrants for November fourth, twenty twenty two and November tenth, twenty twenty two, open for motion.
I made to appear payroll payroll warrants November four and November ten, twenty twenty two.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion passes five zero. Accounts payable warrants for November eighth, twenty twenty two and November fifteenth, twenty twenty two, open for motion.
I move to approve accounts payable warrants for November eighth and November fifteen, twenty twenty.
Well, second.
Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion passes five zero. Uh, approval minutes for November first, twenty twenty two, open for motion.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of November first, twenty twenty two.
Second.
Any questions, corrections, edits? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion passes five zero. Don't believe we have any special presentations or awards or committee appointments, so we'll go right into public hearings. Uh, the first one is for new liquor license for Corinna Stom doing business as Backriver Bistro, sixty five Garden Road. Uh, open for motion to open the hearing.
I'm going to.
No.
I moved open the hearing for the liquor license for Corina Stom D B A Backriver Bistro, sixty five Garden Road.
One second.
And all those in favor? Opening hearing. Hearing is open at six oh six P M. Is there anyone who would like to speak to this liquor license? Don't see anyone online.
Sounds like a wonderful time.
Going once, going twice. Now entertain a motion to close the hearing.
I'm going to close the hearing.
Second.
All of them favor? Five zero. Hearing is closed at six oh six. All right, open for motion on the liquor license.
Make a motion to approve the liquor license for Corina Strom doing businesses at River Bistro located in sixty five Garden Road.
Second.
Any questions, discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion passes five zero. Okay, uh, next public hearing, the auto vehicle graveyard and work on their permit renewals. Uh, this is for Blackens Garage, Rover Auto and Tire and Norm's Used Cars, open for any motion, um, to open here.
I'm going to open hearing.
Second.
All those in favor? Hearing is open at six oh seven. There anyone who would like to speak to this public here?
Move to pose the hearing.
Okay. Motion to close the hearing, is a second. All those in favor? Motion passes five zero or close at six oh eight. Dennis is online. Um. Open for motion on the permit renewals.
Move to a pretty, I would be a graveyard. And or graveyard permit renewals for Blackens Garage, Rover Auto and Tire and Norm's Used Cars.
Second.
The movement seconded, any questions or discussions? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Welcome, I'd say.
Okay, opposed, abstained. Four zero one. You made the motion, Bill, in your second?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, now we have a public comment on non agenda items, are there any members of public who wish to speak on things not on the agenda? Going once, going twice. Okay. Uh, moving down to department head or committee chair, um, we have our department head monthly reports, uh. Dennis, do you want to speak to this?
You just.
Hi.
Hold the space far down.
Does anybody have any questions while I'm trying?
Just space far down.
There is.
I'm good, keep going.
All right, um, down to, um, just any other questions? No, you said, keep going.
I just had one thought.
Yeah.
On Rob's wastewater treatment plant report talks about the over association, associate climate study. And they're calling for a meeting there. Uh, with Dennis and U T officials. One of us has wanted to be part of that, as we kind of talked about, planning liaisons in the past and for these kinds of special projects. But I'm bringing that up because I'd be happy to do it for this.
Can join if that's allowed.
Oh, that's okay, that's definitely welcome here very eventually too, so.
Rob, do you want to speak to that at all?
I'm Rob Lawland, the superintendent of sewer plant. This meeting, uh, we've been really trying to coordinate everything and it looks like pending everyone's approval, it was going to be on December fifth and we only found out yesterday. But we would, if it's okay with Dennis, I have no problem having members of the select board attend. Um, it is a big deal and at that decision, uh, at that meeting, the decision will be made probably to see whether the D E P prefers that we put a wall around the plant or if they move it. And part of all of that, um, comes down to climate change issues and if climate change monies would be available to either move or put a wall on the plant. So, uh, again, if you can take that up, Dennis, I'm totally fine with it and I don't think that over engineering of the D E P people would mind being there. They probably won't, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Interesting, Jack.
Dennis is saying thumbs up.
Cool.
Yeah. Anything else before we move ahead? All right. Uh, down to number nine, unfinished business, West Almond Road taxified property, Keith Hunter. We have information on this in here in packets. Did you want to speak to this, sir? You could just state your name for the record and you can just stand right there, it's going into this. Lauren Powell.
Keith A. Hunter. So I am or was the owner of thirty nine West Almond Road. Um, unbeknownst, untold to me, um, I guess you guys have put a lien on my property. Uh, I didn't know anything about it. I didn't sign or see any certified mail or letters. Um, and I know some of that was in the past two and a half years, um, I've not done so well, um, physically, um, so, uh, before COVID, I, I got screwed over on a job that cost thirty eight thousand dollars, whatever. And then I got COVID and I ended up with white clots all through my body, heart, having problems with a bunch of different things that went on. I didn't work. Basically what I'm saying is I have not worked in in the past two years, but less than five months in the past two years. Um, after COVID, uh, I broke my tibia, I broke my foot three times and I broke my tibia. And, um, like a little over a year ago, I got two plates, eight screws in it. And I gained, I was almost to a hundred extra pounds in the past two years. Uh, I, I do apologize. Once again, I, I figured I'd get a certified letter because I've been dealing with too much main state government service, I R S. It's the last of my, my, uh, my platter, I'd want to say. Um, I've just dealt way too much in the past twelve years. Um, if I would have known that my, you know, I, if I had a certified letter and I would have actually seen that, my taxes would have been all addressed and taken care of. Uh, I actually, the first and only person that I originally heard this from was my father on the sec- on, uh, November second. Um, when he called me and I'm like, what are you talking about? I have no idea. I says, I haven't had a certified letter. Although I haven't been to the mailbox in two years. I have a live-in partner and a son that gets the mail. She's not seen, I, I don't speak, uh, she hasn't seen any certified letters, okay? I did see that a lien was put on, I guess, three years ago, which I didn't notice until this, I checked out some of this paperwork um, that I got today. Um, so I came in to talk to Dennis, um, and, and by the way, the, so I spoke to Dennis on the second. Uh, his recommendation was me to just basically put as a bid to send it out to you guys to talk, to talk to you guys about it to, to hopefully I tax property money to be paid and be able to get my land back. I mean, there's thirty two acres, I know I wouldn't sell it for eight grand, uh, any day. Um, uh, and I think the only other thing is, uh, the only other person that addressed me and came to me was actually uh, uh, next door neighbor Rhymes. I would have never known about this. I would have never seen it and, and see one thing, I would have never seen it and know about it. And as far as I know, my place would have been auctioned off on December first. I, I wouldn't have heard, I didn't know that, so I don't know what to do about it. I don't know the correct way about it and what to say and what to do. I'm just, I'm here, I got a certified check through the, through the, um, bank. And hopefully you can guide me in the next situation where, what do I do? We, I understand bids and bids, but this is my family's land, it had it fifty two years. I planned on having it fifty two years. I've had it seventeen years. Um, and it just, under the circumstances between divorce and a bunch of other things and COVID and all this, I've, I physically haven't had to work. I mean, I literally, I know I've paid forty five thousand dollars. I spent I R S literally twenty six thousand dollars two months ago. So I haven't made that much and that's, I'm here today to you know, put my bid in or do however this works. I, I don't know how it goes.
Thank you. Now you're doing what you're supposed to. This is coming to talk to us.
I've had restless.
Restless. How much did you check for?
Yeah, the check is for the, a full amount that, uh, was for my taxes, seven thousand, nine forty one sixty three.
So, yeah, thank you. You can sit down. Um, we as a board basically need to decide if we'd like to just go ahead and accept this rather than going out to bid. We are allowed to do that. Dennis can lay that out and it's the town manager's report.
So. Kind of make a motion that we accept this check. Get this property back.
Actually, I have a motion.
With now.
Go ahead. I'll look for online.
To authorize the treasurer to accept payment from Keith Hunter in the form of cash money order or certified check for the taxes, taxes, fees and interest due on map R oh five lot oh five six. Payment must be made by five P M. November third. Quick plan deed will be issued at the December sixth select board meeting. Dennis, does that sound right?
And he will have to come into the town office and make sure of the final total because interest keeps accruing each day.
Okay. Did you hear that? You just need to make with your check.
I, I have one here.
Oh, because the, the amount may change a little bit because this interest accruing change.
Okay. Is that the motion you would like to make?
Yeah, I had that right on the tip of my tongue. I'll second yours.
Okay, well.
Who made the motion?
Bill made the motion. I'll second.
I appreciate you. That's a hard thing to get for.
Is, uh, has not been an easy fifteen days, I guess, or fourteen, so I, I truly do apologize. Like I said, it's still never gone there. Thank you very much. Make sure the town, you guys want this now or can we just go into the town?
Uh.
See Dennis tomorrow.
Yeah, I would just come in and see Dennis tomorrow. All right, so motion on the floor, any further questions or discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes five zero. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Um. Down in nine B surplus cloud truck purchase offer. You also had this, um, in Dennis's report. I don't know if anyone has any questions.
They did talk about telling it to the minimum bid that was five thousand, like, I think it'd be fair to just put it back out for bid. Probably squeeze more money out of that.
Other thoughts?
I'm happy to do it. It sounds like fun.
I just think it'd be more fair to put it back out rather than award someone that would pass on the minimum bid.
Okay. That's fine. Anything, anyone feel strongly?
What's it gonna cost us for regional?
Dennis, do you know what it will cost us to go back out to bid?
No, I mean, I don't feel strongly about it either way. We had an offer and I threw it out there, but if you prefer to go out to bid and try to get another thousand dollars for it, that's fine.
Okay, do we need to vote on that?
No, I'm good. Just move along.
Okay. All right. We'll go back out to bid then. Uh, new business, uh, monthly financials, any questions? Discussion?
Someone on money back.
Yeah. All right, uh, moving down to Bureau of Highway Safety, click it or ticket grant. Open for motion.
This, uh, department unit, the expense revenue report.
Oh, sorry, I was putting those all together. Any questions on department here, department here, today expenses and revenue? So Bureau of Highway Safety, click it or ticket grant. Open for a motion.
I made to authorize police chief's chief warrants. This will tell to execute on behalf of the town of Wisconsin, the twenty twenty three Bureau of Highway Safety, click it or ticket it. Grant number O P B twenty three dash oh two oh. Second.
Moved and seconded, any questions? Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion passes five zero. Now, Lincoln County Animal Control Service contracts. Um, this is our annual renewal, I believe. Um, any questions or motion?
We have a caveat in there about authorizing extra expenses. I've got probably the extra two thousand dollar expense last budget. On the last budget, I wondered if we wanted to.
Dennis, did you hear that?
No, I didn't hear all of it. That was the, the medical bill that we had earlier in the year, is that right?
Yeah, I was wondering if we can make sure that contract says that those kinds of things get authorized before they're.
Does it? That's part of the, um, mid-coach mains society contracts and we'd have to take that up with them next year.
Next year, okay.
Open for motion.
I made. Authorize the town manager to execute Lincoln County Animal Control Service contract, twenty twenty three.
Any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion passes five zero. Okay, uh, ten D Northeast Trade Services request to lease office space. This is also in Dennis's report. This is out at the airport. Any questions?
I have a question. Uh, a couple of years ago, we had a problem with the federal government leasing office space out there that wasn't airport related. Does this get involved in that, Dennis?
Uh, I didn't quite understand what the question was.
I believe several years ago, we had a problem with the F A A for leasing office space out at the airport that was not airport related. Is this a problem?
I, I believe, this is before my time, but I believe they cleared that, uh, that's why the arrogant was up there for so long.
Okay.
But they, they already leased, leased office space up there, um, currently, so the only reason it's been vacant, as far as I know, was that we just didn't have any interest in anybody going up there. We get in, we get into an issue with leasing hangers that are not aeronautical, but I don't know that it's a problem with office space.
Okay, thank you.
Open for motion. How would you move that?
I make a motion to approve the Northeast Trade Services request to lease office space.
I got it.
I got it again?
Yeah.
I knew it was probably written down, so.
Right out of my mouth.
Okay, to authorize the town manager to enter into a lease agreement to exceed one year with Northeast Trade Services for office space at the Wisconsin Municipal Airport.
Second.
You second the own motion.
Okay, I'm gonna do that, you second it, okay? So Terry will.
They can have anything they want.
Your next motion? Yes. Didn't that sound like Terry?
Yeah.
Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion passes five zero. All right, uh, set a meeting date with the budget committee as required by, required by Article one, section two point seven of the Wisconsin Town Ordinance. It appeared that the twenty second of November worked, I believe. Yes. Wasn't that the day?
Yes, November, not December.
November, yeah, this first one.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Yep.
Six or five?
I don't know.
Six.
I thought, I saw a five somewhere.
Let's just take that here.
Well, the one in my calendar comes from the email that I think Tom Joyce sent and it put it in five o'clock slot.
I would prefer it be six.
Yeah, and don't you have to travel wise, James?
Um, no, I'll do that.
Six is good for me to understand this, but somebody thinks it's five. Whoever originated this calendar items in my calendar thinks it's a five, so.
Could we move it to six?
Yeah, I just need to make sure the.
Except that it's six o'clock.
Yep, okay, six o'clock, November twenty second, joint meeting with the budget committee. All right. Uh, and then final new business, uh, read a, a letter from Rob. Um, I believe you all saw this. Thank you, Rob. I will read it out, but if anybody would like a copy of it, um, it's basically a thank you um, to everyone who helped with the backup power generators project, so. Thank you.
You.
All right, uh, town managers report. Dennis, are you still there? Okay, well, two things he's gotten, he's got written down are the fact that the winter parking ban is in effect. I assume that's just a reminder. Today is November fifteenth, so please be aware. Uh, and then also a select board rep for the union negotiation. Um, so we need to assign someone to do that formally.
I'll walk here. HR background, we're done. And break negotiations.
Okay.
I'll second that. I was gonna volunteer, Bill.
Trying to get back that meeting level?
Yeah.
All right, well, do you want to make that a formal motion? I don't know if anyone does, might as well.
Yes, I move to appoint Bill along with two of liaison position to re- purchase the union contract with.
Just the liaison of the union contract negotiations, it's fine. All right, second.
It was in here.
All right, all in favor? Motion passes five. Um, it looks like he's still on, but are there any other questions? I'll just point out that, um, this is written in this report, but there is a lot of activity going on outside of the law and art building. They are making progress, so just gonna highlight that. All right, uh, any other, other board business before we get to executive session?
That town looks great.
All right, it'd be wonderful to acknowledge a lot of volunteers who have worked to fit, including the chair and other members of this board.
Town manager.
And town manager, you know, there, there was some garlanding and lighting going on downtown last Friday. Roof putting up. And it was a wonderful day. It is one of our favorite days downtown. And it was a wonderful day, it is one of our favorite days downtown. Decorating the town, thanks to all, thanks to all, and also to our, um, Parks and Rec. Uh, department, doing it all, they're going to be, if they didn't already today, put up the trees, the little trees that everyone wanted. Last year that we began.
I saw them doing that.
Did they do that today?
Yeah.
Um. It's gonna be, gonna be another Dickensian moment in Wisconsin this Christmas. Thanks to everybody.
Alright, uh, we do expect there to be some sort of vote after the second executive session, not after the first. We will come back in for thirty seconds or so, um, after the first one, to then go into the second one, so we'll put. Um, we'll stop the recording and then, well, yeah, stop the recording, obviously, and then I guess. I don't know, we can put, we can put anybody who needs to stay in a separate Zoom room, I guess. Yes, yeah, was that your question, Susan?
Um, yeah, sort of, thank you, so does that mean I just sit tight and just stand by the screen, and you'll do everything, and then you'll come back on at some point?
Yes.
Oh, thank you, okay.
Alright. Yeah. You're saying?
I'm not saying, no.
He may get down in the motions, then I will say. Alright, uh, open for motion for these first executive session.
Move and enter into executive session percent one M R S A, section four, five, six.
Second. Third. Alright, uh, all those in favor? Motion passes by zero. Just in time, we're in executive session at six thirty three.
Hey, what do we do with the screen? Hold that.
You can go off, I'm, you know. Break out room first.